I do, yes.
I'd probably have one.
I'd like to call and order the special meeting of the city council to session regarding budgets.
Okay, Mayor, thank you for allowing us a little time to get ourselves reconfigured here. We've passed out several documents to you, and Gina is going to lead us through just quickly a description of what we handed over to you, an overview of what we'd like to do today. We will also have Chris provide a little update at the start. We anticipate that we will have at least two of these meetings with you, possibly more. If there's an interest from any of you to meet outside of this forum, to go through questions, or to have things changed, or to reformat, or re-present something, we are very interested in wanting to hear from you. The goal is to have the budget for your review and anticipated approval at a November council meeting. And I say "a" November council meeting because I would obviously like to do it at the first meeting, but I know that that may not happen. However, we really, really want to finally get it adopted in the month of November.
2014.
2014. And then it is our sincere ambition for the following year to have this adopted on time. So we will be starting earlier. So we thank you right at the get-go for your patience this year. That's my preamble. Gina, if you'd like to take it from there.
Sure. For some of you, this is going to be familiar; for others, this is going to be brand-new. So what I'm going to attempt to do, and again, my ultimate goal, as I've said before, is to make the complex very simple. So if you, through all of that, come up with a really, you know, tough question I can't answer, awesome. That's my goal. So we'll start off with who we are as an organization. And what I've given to you is our city organizational chart. It looks like this. And this was my attempt last year to put everything that the city does onto one piece of paper. And it was at that time they had a realization, we do a heck of a lot with very few people. So this is your introduction to last year's version of the organization. And we'll be moving this around a little bit with the hiring of the HR manager, and how we've moved forward on IT and everything else like that. So this is just a nice, it's giving you the worldview, if you want to say, the 50,000-foot view of the city. Now, I'm gonna direct you to what's about, you know, in this city, probably 30% to 40% of the expenditures personnel-related. So I provided you with a spreadsheet of individual positions and where they're located in the department. So I just wanted to share that with you. But that's also, that's the, like we talked about last night, that's one of our biggest assets, is personnel. So I'm bringing it to you for you to view that as well. And now, I'm gonna get into, we've got our human assets, and now, I'm gonna talk about how we budget for those human assets, and how we budget for other items as well. Gave you the one-color document that's right in front of you. I'd love to take full credit for it, but I stole it. So it's a wonderful theme with water on it, so I thought it'd look great. This is buckets, and you're gonna hear me talk a lot about buckets. We can say funds, we can say accounts, all of that good stuff. Bottom line, it's how we capture our money. And this is the part that I think that makes government so different from maybe what you do on a daily basis, or even your personal checkbook. We might have our personal savings account, our checking account, and maybe we've got segmented out our savings account to different buckets. In government, we're required to do this. And it's really based on how the monies are given to us. So if the monies are given restricted, what we call restricted funds, through grants, Ole mentions the harbor restricted funds there, we can only spend it on a certain thing, certain item. Sometimes, we can even spend it on people. And it's, we have to have that in its own bucket, its own fund, and that's where Chris's strength is. He's looking at our, all of our funds and making sure those expenditures are in the correct bucket, and that we're spending it the way we're supposed to, so that when we get audited, everything's where it needs to be. Fortunately, with accounting, you can always correct it. So we're trying to, as he's finishing his backlog, and I'm working on budget, which is a snapshot in time, when we start meeting together in this wonderful, he's finishing and we're beginning, we're gonna be able to really get these buckets in line. And I can't wait for, he's almost there, he's done a fantastic job. So with this brief introduction here, I'll just go through this colorful chart. We've got the general fund, which is really the largest fund in the city. It's about $7 million, almost $8 million. And we get taxes in there. So you get your TOT, admissions, sales tax, property tax, we can spend it on anything. And as you can see, that dribbles down to our core services in the general fund, which is public safety, public works, non-harbor, planning, recreation, the chamber subsidy, and special projects. And we've got an account called non-departmental, which I'll, I may get time to talk about that here, maybe next time. Then also, we have something, it turns to the right, to capital projects. The general fund also can, you can choose to use that money any way you want. And it can go to those services, or it can go to capital projects, build things. And that, those are usually one-time items. Some of them carry operational expenses, though, which turn around to be fixed in the general fund. If you open a community service center, you're gonna have to hire people, new utilities, those are fixed costs. But you have the option for it to go to capital. And I'm gonna hold off on internal fund for a moment, and go to the bucket here called restricted. Again, that's your gas tax, we have MTA, it pays for our transportation services, our property tax assessments pays for sewer, saltwater, and refuse. Those are restricted funds, we can't use them for anything other than that. And then, you can also use that money for operations, like ES and CRNR, or some of that money, which if proper financial planning, does apply to capital projects. You wanna replace the MRF, you want to set up those expenditures. Now, to the far-left, internal service fund. This is our, internal service fund, this is where it gets kind of funky in government. It charges other funds, and it also spends. So in order to spend, it needs to charge other departments. So you're building maintenance, your allocated cost, HR. If any fund has personnel in it, we charge it. Denise's time as well. So that's an internal service fund. So within the budget, and I'll get more into this, it ends up being a double-counting mechanism, which you're gonna see me pull it out, because we're charging the departments, but we're spending. So that, that's where it gets a little funny with budget, makes it fun. So that's the overview of who we are. So when you hear that we have, and I'll throw the third rail out there, a $1.6 million deficit, we have to look at it on a fun, a bucket-by-bucket basis, and to see where that's coming from. In some cities, I'll give you an example, prior one, we built a library, $60 million. The way, if I were to do it in this sheet, the way we've done it, it would show that we had a $60 million deficit, because we're using prior-year reserves. So it does kind of, that scenario works here, because it's, it helps us go from fund to fund, but you have to look at it from that perspective. Not all that money is something that we can spend on anything. So, and again, if I've gone too fast on this portion, I can meet with you individually, and I love this part of my job. I'm a little tired, but I love it. So this is the best part. I've also handed out to you a description of funds Word doc. This gets into, if you're not verbal, not visual too much, but you like to read, this gets into a little more detail of it. It gives you some time. So I won't go through that necessarily right now, but it's for your enjoyment.
Only Gina can add. Budgets are enjoyment.
I've been, yeah, that's, I've been known for that. So now, I'm gonna take you to the big proposed spreadsheet. This is, I'll take you back to some smaller ones soon, if you have this one in front of you, proposed expenditures. Okay, I'll call this the Ole spreadsheet. He, he wanted to see how we spent our total budget, and this is your first introduction to the total budget proposed for this next fiscal year, by salaries, overtime, maintenance, contractual capital, and internal service funds. So if you go across the top, you'll see, we go through those categories by type, and then I also break out internal service funds. If you go down the spreadsheet, you'll see it by those buckets I was talking about earlier, and then you'll see a box around internal service funds as well. This is where the double counting occurs, and I just wanted to, it's a high-level view of it, but it shows how that does work. We charge other funds overhead, but we also spend. So I have to pull that out, and if you look down at the far-right-hand column, you'll see how I pull that out. And what, my next project on this is actually to look at prior-year data, to put it in this kind of format, too, to show the difference on this particular spreadsheet. So you'll have a net down at the bottom of how we changed. Again, I don't, this is a high-level view, I'm sure we'll have questions on it. I have a, have detail that leads to the 7.1 in salary and benefits. I also have detail on professional contracts. Like I said, if we get to that point in this conversation, I can bring those out. So we can drill down to those complicated questions I mentioned earlier, or we can stay high-level. Now, we're gonna move to Ben's spreadsheet.
Does everybody have that? I don't know if I have.
Not yet. I didn't wanna, if I, you know.
Didn't want to jump ahead.
Okay, all right, yeah, let's, let's do it.
So it is a little difficult, I mean, to look at these numbers when we don't know what fed them from underneath. Without the detail, it's, we're just looking at numbers, it makes no sense.
Exactly, exactly. And we're gonna get to the detail, but if, if I dot, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
So, I'm sorry?
Do you want me to pass it on?
Oh, that'd be great, thank you. And this is still a big-picture view by fund level, and, let's see.
Well, let me ask you another question, if I may.
Sure.
So all the departments, they kind of gave you their wish list, and whatever, and then you massaged it from there, or did you just put everything they wanted in their list, or you, or what?
No, so what, a couple things. So yes, we did, number one, go to all the department heads and say, you know, we're putting together the budget. If there are items that I'm not aware of, that you need, we obviously need to be made aware. So some of those requests have made it into what you're gonna see today, some did not. Right, we don't, we didn't automatically include every single thing if it wasn't reasonable, or if the timing wasn't good, or if it just was out of the scope of what we should be doing.
Okay.
Having said that, you know, this, these type of study sessions are also good times to talk about those type of things, things that you'd like to see. The other thing we've, we've tried to do is make sure that the goals that you've identified are being addressed in your spending plan. And if we've missed one, we certainly would want to hear about that from you. And then finally, we also have, which Gina is handing out to you now, a list of capital proposed, I should say, capital improvement projects, which is very important. It's, and we'll get into this more in detail, but it's listed by priority, and it's got an amount attached to it. So anyway, we'll go through all that.
All righty. And I've given you a brief introduction of the overview of funds, and I'll do one little brief one, and then I'll turn it over to Chris. This is the one-page summary that's now moved to two pages. If you recall, last year, we had a one-page summary. And on that one-page summary, this is where we had the $1.6 million deficit. And as I introduced earlier, it's across all funds, and if you had one-time expenditures, those one-time expenditures popped out in that figure. So if, since we've changed it to the two-page version, I want to let you know, if we had the 1.6 in front of, you had the 1.6 in front of you, the number on the first page would be $250,000 on the first page. The 1.6, the remainder of the 1.6 fell to the back page to our proprietary funds, the sewer funds. So just for those who recall last year, I just wanted to brief you on that. So in looking at this particular page, what it does, and I'll go from left to right and describe what it does. This moves from, basically, if you want to call it your savings account column, all, everything that these funds saved over the years in column A, the estimated beginning balance, and then moves to what I call your monthly budget. What do you make in this, or your annual budget, what do you make in the year? And any transfers in from any other budgets that you might have in that year, in that revenue-producing, in that particular year. So it's like different buckets, moving monies around, to go to column B, which is expected revenue. So that's a total of your current revenue in for the current fiscal year, and then transfers from other funds that are assisting. Then we move to the operating expenditure. Again, expenditure-wise, that's how much you're gonna spend, but we tie it to revenue, I'll get that, to that, show that in a moment. And transfers out, those funds that are going to help those other funds, to a total expense column, across, which is operating expenditure plus transfers out. And then what I've created is, from last year, a delta reduction and a delta addition column. I could have combined that into one column, but I wanted you to see the net, the negatives in one column, and the positives in another. And then the final is the ending balance. So when you take everything you think you're gonna spend in a year, make in a year, ending balance says, okay, did I have enough? And if I didn't, I have to go to my savings account. So that ending balance says how much is left in your savings account. The far-right column is the married funds. In governmental accounting, those different buckets, we might have more than one, but we have one general fund, but in accounting, you have something called governmental funds. And they, in the financial statements, get combined together. You won't see all of these different funds in the CAFR, or in the financial statements that Chris gives you. It's all combined together, because they walk and talk the same. And technically, those funds could be used for anything. So I've done my, the budget side of that, and I've married these funds from my perspective, which ones could combine. Are there some restrictions on some? Yes, there are. We have a McLean Fire, McLean Hall-Putman Trust Fund, trust. So those monies should be spent there, but it's on fire department, which is still discretionary in that particular department. They can spend it as they wish. And it's still considered a governmental fund. So what you want to pay attention to on here is the beginning balance, what your checkbook looked like at the beginning of the year, and what it looks like at the end of the year. And yes, we are reducing that along the way. And final one-note before Chris begins, ultimately, our goal is to create what's called assigned reserves to that, that checkbook number, so that you develop a policy that says, okay, this is how I want it to be spent, and it gets tied to that. So it's tied to one-time expenditures instead of ongoing operations. Ultimately, it's GASB 54, it's something that we haven't yet implemented here. And it's, it's a whole process in its own right. So it allows you to dictate how we spend that fund balance. So I will leave it, let it, a big part of what Chris has done is he's given you that beginning, what your checkbook, what your savings account looks like. We haven't known for quite a while, we've had the backlog for several years, and this is his best shot. He's been here night and day doing that, and so I'll let him describe column A for you.
Good morning. Yes, column A, beginning fund balance, which is the 13, 14 fiscal year, which we just ended about four months ago. We are, we've looked at all of the balance sheet accounts for all of the funds, we've looked at the revenue and expense accounts as well, we've scrubbed them and cleaned them up. There were things there that hadn't been tended to for many years, we've looked into them and re-classed them to the appropriate place where they should be, or if dollars were designated for a certain purpose, and an expense came in in the past that should have been applied against that, and they weren't, we, you know, applied the expenditure against the appropriate dollar. So we did a bunch of cleanup. Now, last year, I guess to give you some perspective, when the budget was being done, and there were two of you on the council at that point in time when the budget was being presented, the beginning fund balance column, I guess, was spoken to with a confidence level. It wasn't, you weren't really assured of what the, the numbers were, and I've heard numbers bantered about maybe 80% or something like that, if this is what you're beginning, your savings account is to lead off the year. We're very confident that these numbers here are, will be where we rest once the year is concluded, and when the auditors opine on our financial statements for 13, 14. There'll be some movement, yes, because we still are receiving expenses, invoices, believe it or not, pertaining to June or prior today. We even still received a couple of checks this week for revenue that would apply to next year. So the fund balance can change a little bit, but not materially at all. So again, the, we've scrubbed the balance sheet accounts, all of the funds, we're very confident on these, on these numbers. And as Gina spoke to, these are, again, the funds of the city, this, when she talked about the marrying of these funds, this is, that's how they collapsed down for how we report them in the financial statements. And you all have last year's financial statements. So it says a general fund, it comprises the general fund plus, plus those other governmental funds, that's how that collapses down. So I just want to say, we've done a good job cleaning that up, so that the go-forward for the focus here that, you know, Gina's leading a great, a great charge on, is the revenue and expenses, the budget going forward. So you have the good numbers in which to base to begin that with. So that was just my brief introduction. Anything else, Gina?
Do you want to talk about the bond?
Okay. We, we do, we have, we have tax allocation bonds that were issued many years ago. The tax allocation bonds, A version, A series is used for development projects, the B series are used for funding low, moderate-income housing projects. Those monies are restricted for those purposes. Now, we've been drawing down those proceeds, and in particular, the A series, those, again, are for development projects, specific development projects spoken for in the bonds and the covenants of the bonds. Those monies have been drawn down over the years. We currently have a balance of $1.2, $1,210,000 in, held by a trustee for our benefit. And those are monies that we will draw upon to complete project work. Now, in the past, we have to complete a reconciliation on, again, the balance is $1.2 million being held by the trustee. We are in the process of doing analysis, because potentially, the city has already fronted those monies on approved projects. So we need to, once we complete the analysis, we're gonna do a bond draw request and request to receive those monies, and that will serve to replenish the general fund, which has fronted these costs in advance. Potentially, there's also dollars that we'll be able to use for future projects, there are specified projects. And those specified projects, quite frankly, in the past dealt with lower terrace road, there were significant improvements that were made there, those bond proceeds were used for that. The Pebley Beach road mitigation, wastewater treatment plant repairs, those are the main projects those dollars were going to. So once we complete that analysis, we'll be able to determine how much of those dollars will immediately go back to the general fund now, and add to the fund balance that is here, or how much can be used for future projects. So it's just trying to, kind of give you an idea, there's $1.2 million out there coming to us, we just have to finish the analysis, see how much of that we've already, will reimburse us, or a go-forward basis.
So that could change your, your numbers here. Just be, be aware, that's something that's coming.
And, and anymore? We're good, okay. So what I will do is I'll briefly go through the big picture here, and then go into some detail, go back and forth a little bit. As we go down these funds, I'm gonna describe to you what we're doing in these funds briefly, and then just note a little bit of the, and fund balance. So the first page are considered those funds with one caveat, that are general funds, in a sense. The caveat is the harbor fund. As you heard last night, those are restricted funds, we can only use the monies for that fund. So, but we wanted to show you the big picture, the two big funds, general fund and harbor fund on one page. As we go down, you'll see the general funds, city infrastructure, this is traditionally one-time expenditures, it goes to capital assets, we capitalize that over time on our, on our books. The traffic and safety fund, that is, anything related to code enforcement, traffic.
Can you back up again?
Sure, sure.
A little more detail on city infrastructure, one-time stuff like.
Okay.
Or did, or did you want to do that, was that later?
You know what, I, we can, we can go into detail.
Do you know something, Gina? I'm sorry, I should have touched on this, I just saw it, looking at the column. If, if I may direct your attention, the column A, the estimated beginning balance, that first column, where it says general fund, shows $4.7 million. I'm sorry, this is, do we all see that on top? Okay. Again, assets minus liabilities is fund balance. So our assets are our cash in our bank, our receivables, this building, the fire trucks. Liabilities are accounts payable, claims, potential claims, those represent our liabilities. The difference between the two is our fund balance, or equity, if you will. So, but of that equity amount, not all of it is spendable, we can't convert it to cash. For example, this building, we can't sell this building, we're certainly not gonna sell the fire trucks. So when we deduct out those non-liquid assets, it leaves us an amount of money that is spendable, if you will.
The 4.7.
So exactly, 4.7. But when you look at the other funds, if you will, you'll see negative amounts. And that means the fund balance is in a negative position, that means the liabilities exceed the assets. The fund overspent itself. And quite frankly, the funds, some of these funds have been overspending themselves for years. It's just that when we, you know, for financial statement reporting purposes, again, they collapse together, they, you know, they're married together, and you don't see the individual detail. But here, we flush it out, we show all these funds that exist on our, on our books, and where they actually stand, so that you can get an idea, you know, what we should do with these funds, you know, what revenues are coming, what expenses, what, you know, what actions we should take accordingly. So, so as you move down through those, and again, anytime where there's a negative fund balance of, say, 100, you know, the first one is the city infrastructure, has a negative balance of $170,000. Essentially, those expenses that pertain to that fund are being funded by another fund, i.e. the general fund. So someone's gonna pay for it, the general fund is paying for it. Some funds are more liquid, others are not. Additionally, we, we have cash, cash is reconciled through the fiscal year, we know all of our cash that we have. And it, all the cash of the city is pooled, it all goes into a pool, so there aren't separate checking accounts, if you will, for all of these monies, because certainly, a bank wouldn't allow us to go negative on an account. So since the monies are all pooled, these funds will borrow against the pool, and as they, they receive money, they repay the pool. So this is just a snapshot at this point in time, at June 30, 2014, the position of fund balance for each of these funds. And again, just moving through, you can see some are positive and some are negative. And in total, you know, the total budgeted funds is about $6.7 million positive for the general fund, the proprietary funds, internal service fund, as an example. So if there are any questions on that, please, I can expand a bit further.
No, that's great, and thank you, Chris.
And we can carry a negative on an ending balance forever, like with a hospital? I mean, you could just, that, is that just on paper, it's just a negative?
It is, it's something that we are going to be dealing with, we will be talking about this as a, as part of these budget study sessions, but it's just that, that fund, that hospital fund collapses in with the general fund, so it's, you know, you don't see that detail. But since it's an individual fund, we're showing it here. But we will be talking about that particular fund, yes.
I can't see where you can distinguish the positive from the negative.
It's bracketed.
Bracketed, okay, thank you.
And again, on the far-right, the total married funds gives you that sense, when we combine all the funds together. It's gone from 4 point, well, let's see, I don't have the total there, but it's at 3.6 at this point, 4.7 to 3.6. With a, and that, and that whole area of 186,6,000. But I think what I'll do is, instead of describing each of the funds, since I gave you that one sheet describing what each fund does, I think I'll start drilling a little bit down to detail. And we've got the capital spreadsheet as well, and you have that. That was, I'll start with that briefly. That's a draft format, and that's our public works director's preliminary glimpse at the CIP. And it doesn't include all the capital improvement projects. Some harbor projects aren't in their vehicles requested, being proposed for purchase. So it's a preliminary look from that perspective. And just from what the long-term goal for that particular spreadsheet is to identify a 10-year to 20-year infrastructure plan in all the core areas of the city. And again, this is just the first cut at that. And again, this is just the first cut at that. And in that particular column, if we look there for these projects that he's come up with, with Ben, we've got a total project cost, which is purely an estimate, and the project cost for 1415, and what has been included in the budget. So, to answer your question, Annie, these are a portion of the projects we've included in this budget. And we've done our best to highlight it according to the goals that you've recently looked at and discussed. I don't know, Ben, if you wanted to go through that sheet at all at this point?
Yeah. Dennis, why don't you come forward, if you don't mind? What we've done on this one is we've established a priority column, obvious high, low, and those things that are on hold. The other significant column, I think, is what we're, the amount that we're proposing to include, the Public Works Proposed Project fiscal year 1415. So, maybe, Dennis, if you could just kind of touch on some of the high priorities and we can go through any of these that you have questions about. But these are the items that we believe are the capital improvements that are the most important for this coming year. So, Dennis?
Yeah, very good. We have to remember the CDO and our requirements to address that. We have some sewers that need to be repaired, inspected and repaired, especially down on Main Street, or Front Street. And that is, definitely has to start in 1415. So, we have associated with that, I believe you're looking, Gina, we're looking at the Public Works spreadsheet.
Let's make sure it's the most recent version.
This one here? Does this change from that one? This one's okay? Good. All right. It'd be item three on that spreadsheet. Just into 1415, as we know, 15 ends June 30. We're going to be in about $150,000. We'll be coming back to council through your approval to enter into a public bid to repair some sewers down on Crescent Avenue. I believe that's our first priority. The Pebley Beach Chain Link Fence Rock Protection is, let me find that for you.
Number 15, I believe.
There we go.
Second page?
Yes. That has to start. That was a requirement, as the city attorney mentioned to us, parsec issue. And that's going out to public bid. I'm working on those contract documents today, as a matter of fact.
And let me ask you a question. Isn't, how, it says it's out of the general fund, but didn't we get money for that? Are we just coming up, this is our own million dollars?
I'm not aware of any grant money to pay for that.
Oh, that was always intended for us to pay for that out of pocket?
That's the unfortunate part.
Oh, okay.
It's significant. It's a lot of money.
Thank you.
And again, council, the $300,000 figure is an estimate of what we're going to spend in fiscal year 1415. Total project's going to be about 1 million, as you'll see in the projected cost column.
Total projects can be 1.9, is that what you said?
1.1 to 1.2. It really depends, Joe, upon who's, what contractor's hungry and if we get a local contractor or not. But it has to go to public bid. And so, it could be a contractor from the mainland. I don't assume it will be because of the cost to mobilize, but we have to be conservative on our estimate there. The E-Bus implementation.
I'm sorry, can I back you up to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, roadway. Can you help me understand better the alleys, concrete in the alleys?
It's...
Which item are you on, Councilmember?
Seventeen A.
Thank you.
A and B.
Okay, thank you.
That's only for design, not to construct the alleys. I don't know if you're all aware of, I've had several complaints throughout the community about trying to improve the alleys and the flats. It's quite a project, unfortunately, because it's, past contractors haven't compacted properly. And we have, we have cleanouts that are higher than other cleanouts. We have driveways that are higher than the adjacent driveways. It's a mess. The $22,000 is for survey and engineering, develop a plan to replace the alleys in concrete, is the way I was leaning. I think it's going to cost probably the same as asphalt would, and it's going to last a lot longer. Well, definitely come back to council and ask for your approval if you want to do it. But we're listing it here for 1415 if you so desire to implement that.
And as part of this process, if there is a project that you have concerns about, if you don't think the timing is appropriate, that's why we're here. I mean, these are things that we think are important. You guys are the decision-makers, obviously. So, that's part of what we're doing here. Or if you think something is a low priority, we've got to list it as a higher or medium. You know, that's part of what we're wanting to do.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to put it on paper for you so you can decide.
So, where are we at with the laterals in the alleys prior to this concrete in it? Is that all done now? Or has everybody been notified of that?
Most of them are good, Councilman. We have one alley that's scheduled in my 10-year capital improvement plan. And in compliance with the CDO, we have one to one and a half alleys that have to be replaced, the mainland.
The laterals or the mainland?
The laterals are, unfortunately, the homeowner's responsibility.
So, okay. So, the main coming down the alley?
The city's mainland is suspect in a couple alleys.
So, are you getting to the point of we do this and then somebody has to come in and make an adjustment?
And then you put this, if we get to that point?
Yeah.
That was just a concern.
One thing that I wouldn't do is pour concrete on a bad sewer. So, prior to that, we'll either line it or replace the sewers that are bad.
Okay.
This $22,000 you see here is just for your own desires. If you want it, we'll go ahead and implement the design and engineering of that.
This is just me, since we're able to speak up. I would say, because that's, we're now talking just between now and June, basically.
Correct.
So, I would think this would be a low between now and June, maybe look at budgeting it for the next year because I think there's some other higher priority things. If we're going to have to snip a bit, that might be a recommendation.
There we go. We're successful, and we just want your input, what you want us to do.
I mean, you're calling it low, so I'm calling it lower, I guess.
Yes. To a lot of people that live there, it's not low, but...
Sorry out there. So, should we be looking at these, going from one to whatever, a little more seriously now that we're kind of, or do we? Because, you know, we just picked that one up because it says low, and basically it's get it off there. But do we want to look a little more seriously at these things right now?
The idea is to have you vet all the items on here. And we can do that now, or if you want to have some time to consider and come back, however you want to proceed.
Could we ask some basic questions about each of the projects? And then, can we come back to agreeing whether or not we...
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Because I know that I would really like to delve into a few of these quite a bit deeper. But this may not be the right forum, so...
It's entirely up to you.
Want to start with one and go down?
Well, I mean, we can keep going from here if you want.
Well, let's go down the list then to make it simple. We already spoke about Pebley Beach Rockfall Protection. The alleys, we've spoken about. And you notice I'm skipping a bunch of inserts there. So, if you, if you want to talk about anything I'm skipping, go ahead.
Okay, let's start with one then.
Okay.
The Pebley Beach Ripper, that was the thing to make it really nice and safe and wonderful. And you're projecting a cost of 5.8. We have no funds available and whatever.
Right. And on that one, the thought is, that was a council-identified priority. But our logic is, we're wanting to take care of the rockfall.
Yes.
Address that first. Not only is that a parsec requirement, but it's logical that we need to shoulder that up before we start with the road. So, that's why, I mean, that's an important project, but maybe we could put a little asterisk there so that you know that that's the logic.
And that's a project where we'll be looking for grants?
I would say the caveat is, we would love a grant anywhere. So, we're looking for grants everywhere.
Okay.
I can tell you where I'm looking for that.
Yes, please do.
So, we're looking at grants?
So, I think, as you're aware, we've tried real hard to get the roads functionally classified, and we were successful for certain portions. That will now make Pebley Beach Road eligible for what's called Highway Safety Improvement Funds. Lots of money available there. So, we're in the discussion process with Metro, who's going to offer some technical assistance on how to navigate that with Caltrans. So, we're moving forward on that. But I just would like to add that grants are always much, look a lot better if they're actually pre-designed, more than just a concept. Because when you're going and asking for a lot of money, you kind of want to have something more than just an idea to show them.
Do we have a design for that project?
No, not that I'm aware of.
How do we go ahead with that? Because didn't we lose some, we lost some of that road during that hurricane as well. Is any of that money going to possibly materialize? Do you know?
I don't believe that we will receive any emergency funding for part of that. That's my opinion.
We gave it heck of an effort.
We sent off that... We will be coming back to you probably to close that proclamation. It was still a declared state of local emergency at this time. We're just trying to determine the delta between what was covered and what is not covered. That's really what the funding is available for. If you didn't have something insured, it's not eligible for funding.
So, go ahead.
I just think that my suggestion would be, if you see these line items on the budget and their priorities, maybe you prioritize a certain amount to do like a preliminary engineering estimate with a really low-grade design. So, then that way, we can go shop it around, and you're not spending a lot of money on the front end. And then, if you, then if we're successful, oftentimes, the grant will pay for the full design. So, a little bit, a little bit of money on the front end can actually net you a lot of money on the back end.
So, assuming we wanted to go with that, is there, would there be a suggestion for that little bit of money on the front end?
That would be a Dennis question.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
So, if, let's say, you know, Pebley Beach is important, and then, and we decided to follow, to be able to follow in, if grants come available, that little initial design? How would we, what would a preliminary design cost on Pebley Beach Ripper?
Well, frankly, I'm trying to work with the Island Company right now because they're in the process of doing some engineering.
Okay.
And I'm going to come back to the city manager shortly with a proposal to extend the engineering to develop a scope of work and approximate amount of what a design would cost.
To possibly work with him?
Pardon me?
To possibly work with the Island Company to...
Yes, sir.
To pool our resources together so we, because, yeah, we all have interest in that road. And Edison does too, because we have lines running underneath that road, right? We have a walkway. We have liability issues with pedestrians, visitors, locals, children, you know. Everybody has a dog in that hunt.
And, Councilman, that was one of your goals, that walkway.
Yeah.
And we're cognizant of that. But what I was getting to is, the Island Company is currently doing some engineering down at the boatyard and around the corner.
How about this as an approach? If the project's 5.8 million, what would be your professional opinion as to a percentage of that amount that would be needed for a design? Is that a 5%?
It could be as much as 8%.
8%?
On a preliminary design?
So, 8% of 5.8 million only is?
Forty-something thousand.
There you go.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
This may not be directed towards you, this might be directed toward Ben. We, at the Planning Commission, have an approval in concept plan. Does the same thing exist at the Coastal Commission?
I don't know.
Because before we go blowing a lot of money on this, we want to make sure that we get it approved by the Coastal Commission.
I see. Get it vetted.
A good idea. The Island Company has already started the process with the Coastal Commission on some of the repairs they want to do down by the boatyard and barge area. But as you rightfully stated, this would entail more. Let's go down, I'm sorry, on page one again. We were just at, the mayor brought up the walkway we were talking about. Freshwater Resources, Mayor, city manager and I feel we'd like to be proactive. And we put some, almost around $50,000. You'll see the 20 and the $30,000 there. And that's to investigate reclaimed water or all things specific to...
I don't see, I don't see any money on reclaimed water.
Pardon me?
I see 50 total, but I see one in a D cell demo, which you can explain what that is. And then, and I see for the Community Water District, but I think the reclaimed water is really important. And I need to, I personally need to see some figure in there.
The thought that we actually were striving for on this one is, I thought we were going to have an all-things-water subject matter expert item identified. We've got it broken out here. What we wanted to do is, we wanted to have a pot of money for professional services. And those services would be used for not only pursuing the viability of reclaimed water, but also hiring hydrologists, and also for having somebody come in and tell us what potentially could be the lift involved with trying to pursue a community services district. So, we talked about revitalizing, not revitalizing, changing the century yesterday. We need to change that so that it reflects an item for professional services. That's the intent.
Okay. And I would like to see it increased just a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we'd also talked about bumping that up to like $40,000, I remember from the discussion yesterday, too?
I can change it.
Yeah, okay.
And then, talk about the D cell demo. What's that? Oh, demonstration, not demolition?
Yes.
We'd really be up for criptin.
And just, just so you know, the thought on that, and again, this is just a suggestion. We don't know what's going to happen with water, obviously, this next year. Edison informally has told us, even though they are the water provider, if we decide that we want to rent or purchase or bring in some type of D cell unit, and people want to use it for drinking or other uses, they're not going to be obstructionist in that. They understand that we might want to do something like that.
Okay. And then, well, based on the information we got from Edison last night, they're looking like we're not really going to be doing something perhaps until summer or further. So, do we want to put that over into the next year?
There's going to be more money that I'm going to recommend we put into next 15, 16, definitely.
So, just starting with the 30?
Correct.
Okay.
And I should add as well, I worked with Dave Clary, and I don't know if Dave wants to come up at all. We do have $75,000 in the sewer budget for a reclaimed water project. So, it's really a study, the reclaimed water project.
And then, going down my list, we already discussed the $150,000 for the first phase of our sewer repairs. The CDO required us to come up with a 20-year sewer repair or sewer implementation project. This $150,000 is phase one of that 20-year project.
And then, you pay us back? You pay us back?
Yeah, I'll be happy.
You pay the general fund back on, because of the fees?
Dave, you want us to talk on water?
I don't have any of that information with me.
Oh, okay.
It was the reclaimed water, the reclaimed water project. We budgeted $75,000 for that.
Yes, for the second phase.
Yes. So, any detail description on that?
It's more of an engineering study. It's the way the proposal was planned, put together, like for an engineering study and everything, that's what would be put together.
What is an engineering study? Does that mean, how we would go? Go ahead and explain. I'm just speculating.
That's what an engineering study is, to see the feasibility of what would be necessary to get, to get recommendation water across this.
Okay. Right, because... Okay, right, because otherwise, we have 200,000 gallons of, of good reclaimed, what could be good reclaimed water just going into the ocean, correct?
Yes.
And we own that water, correct? Great. I think that's a great idea, because we're just, we're just flushing that fresh, good, potential good fresh water down the toilet, otherwise. And we need to capture that, because we own it, okay? And we've already?
And you, when you say there's $75,000, I don't.
Yes, yeah, this is, there's two, there's worlds that have yet, and to me, we're going to create a large CIP. This excludes certain other functions. This is one portion of CIP.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's Dennis's view of the world.
It's not on this sheet.
Correct, correct. It's, it's in some detail, I'll be giving you shortly.
Yeah, it's not on the sheet, sheet.
Not on his sheet, it's on your sheet. It's not on your sheet, it's on his sheet.
Not on my sheet.
And so let me ask a question, just to clarify it for me. So when we have the Reclamation Committee working on things, and maybe you have a Ralph saying, you know, want to consider somebody like Sonny, that would basically be saying, we don't need to spend the money that way. We would instead, we would be hiring Enviren instead of somebody else out there in the universe, correct?
Well, what, what I was trying to do was earmark a certain amount of money for professional services, all things water. And I had not made any determination as to who might, on the reclaimed water end, provide that expertise to us, is what I would say.
But that's, so this is basically one potential, as well as any, the rest of the world out there? Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Dave.
And I should just comment on, we've got two different sides of looking at the CIP. Dennis views one side, and then ES comes in and presents their part of the budget in terms of what they want. So I'm going to create a document to make it easy for you to show all of that together.
Okay.
Saltwater utilities was next down on my list for 14, 15. You all remember July of 2013, when we had a major saltwater break. You're all familiar with all the water line breaks on the mainland, and they don't have saltwater. Our system's very old. We need to start addressing that. We can't kick the can down the road any longer. We're going to have major sewer, saltwater breaks if we don't start replacing valves and fittings underground. So in this fiscal year, we're going to start with about $75,000. ES has also got some more money on their sheet designated to this. But that's what that $75,000 is for, is to start replacing some valves.
Dennis, did that include any type of inventory to have on hand?
Yes, it does, sir.
And the other challenge we have, as you well know, is the really annoying thing that happens, we break a valve, and we don't have it. We wait for two or three days. It's crazy. So we're, we want to get to a point where we, we do have a number of our more common valves.
Yes.
As, as you probably know, everyone's uncommon, right? They all seem to be different for some reason, but have an inventory as best we can.
We're just following DWP's example.
What's that?
We're just following DWP's example.
Yeah, great example to follow.
There we go, yeah. And unfortunately, we have lines that are four, six, eight, 10, 12.
Right, so it's crazy.
We need to, we really need to stock up. So we're hoping that you'll approve this. This is probably a top priority as well. Cabrillo Mole, I understand we need to start that. So we put?
This is encumbered money. You want to talk about that, Gina?
Yes, in last fiscal year's budget, we had $500,000 in the harbor fund set aside as the beginning of, of both projects, Fuel Dock and the Mole, $250,000 to go to each of the grants that are available to us in that area. And it is now sitting in, in a, in reserve for those functions. And again, we're partially through the year, so it's a matter of, will we spend the $250,000 for that? But we can allocate that as initiating design phases for that, too. So it's, in your big spreadsheet, what we've done, if you look at the large one that shows the balances here, if Chris, let's see, if you look at proprietary fund 104, the highlighted one for 2.2 million 14,000. So, let's see, it's on this sheet here. And it's a little block on it.
Shaded.
Shaded. It's highlighted, again, that's a savings account for the harbor fund, and it's been reduced. If Chris looks at his bucket, it'll have $500,000 more in it. I've taken out $500,000 of, yes. And it's going to be a loan. It isn't reflected yet in this sheet. It's going to be a loan, if you turn to page two, to fund, in the special revenue section, fund 106 and 109. As you can see, I've moved the, the $500,000, the $250,000 for each bucket there, and it's available for funds, so.
Okay. And 106 special revenue?
$250 each?
Yeah.
And, and on the Cabrillo Mole, the rest of it, is this just looking at the base? This has nothing to do with?
That's correct. Right, right, and what we'd like to do, sorry?
From the deck down?
Yeah, this is, this is the underbelly, if you will. And so we have grant money to, to take care of that. This would be the first step in trying to refurbish that, what, you know, what's, what's the scope that is involved. We will be coming back to you at a future meeting with a concept for the above ground, if you will, and how we might go about trying to refurbish that, conceptually.
How much grant money do we have for that?
It's a $2.4 million grant worth of 3 million, for a $3 million project. So it's a $600,000 required match. It's a reimbursement grant. It does also include some shade structure on top. So we are going to have to do something, and probably that won't be a bad idea to do until we come up with a master plan for the mole. So the, it's the underneath, fixing the, the bones of it, and then creating some structure on top, shade structure on top, whatever design the council deems appropriate to protect the passengers when they're queuing, because it's really hot out there. So it's a $3 million total project. The $250 that's budgeted now will go towards the match. It's, it's a, it counts.
Six, which is 600,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And just a real quick time check thing, I know that people have lives and commitments. I'd recommend that we probably go no more than 15 more minutes in this session, and then cut out so that you can go to work and your other obligations.
Okay, let me try to speed it up a little bit.
Thanks for taking the queue.
I'll need, I'll need some, I'll need a little bit of time at the end, so.
Little time.
Can't we just put the clock on? Can we just finish this?
Real quickly, the Fuel Dock.
Can we just finish this, you think?
I think we can.
Okay, cool, let's try to.
If I shut up?
If I don't give Gina her time, we can't.
Okay.
Okay, the Fuel Dock. It's been delayed a little bit. We had some cultural resources issue that fell through the cracks. I think we have it resolved. We're going to Planning Commission the next meeting in November. Coastal Commission is, at that time, going to reevaluate our permit, and we're, we're cautiously optimistic it's going to be approved. I'm anticipating the public bid to hit, hit the streets on the mainland probably February or March of 15, and I'm anticipating project completion a year thereafter.
We still have no restaurant designed into this.
Correct. We have a restaurant grant, but I haven't seen.
No restroom, not restroom, not restroom, restaurant.
Restaurant.
Correct.
I haven't seen that.
Right, similar to, to the Mole, we want to come back to you with a concept on this one as well.
Sand replenishment study. It's, I'm sorry, it's not supposed to say study, it's just sand replenishment. We lost a lot with Hurricane 3. I've been talking to Councilman Sampson, we're trying to replenish the beaches. Unfortunately, it's very expensive, we have to haul it over from the mainland. So we have $30,000 in there. If you guys would like to do it, I'd be happy to do it. Turn the page.
Is that something we have to do before summer, right?
You should.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's our opinion that, I mean, you've been down there, I'm down there a lot, it's a lot of rocks, it's, you know, this is one of our, this is our front door. This is one of the first things that visitors experience, and I think that.
We have to do it before summer.
It's kind of crappy right now, is my opinion.
Absolutely.
We do, that's why I have a 14, 15.
Okay, so let's definitely move on that sometime in the future.
Yeah.
We need more sand.
You give me the okay, and I'll go.
Yes, sir.
Pebble Beach Rockfall, we already discussed that.
Wait, if we can go back, I think we skipped 7, 8, 9, 10, 11.
We skipped what?
The coffer dams, seawalls repairing deteriorate, coffer dam, $7.5 million. You didn't even put a priority on that, is that a priority?
What number are you on there?
We're on eight.
Number eight.
On the first page, we, we kind of skipped over.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, this is probably down the road, a few years.
Okay.
There isn't any money projected for this budget, so I think that's why we're skipping all of those.
Okay, so, okay, the handrail, we approved it in this year's budget, correct? But it's a low priority, so what are we thinking about doing? Are we not going to do that now?
Right, right now, it's a low priority unless you want to make it a priority. It's on this list for you to consider.
Okay, right, because I know we approved that, right? We got a bid on that, on that handrail, did we not?
You approved, you approved the purchase of the materials.
Right, so let's ask, since it's, do we want to get it done between now and the end of the year, or carry that money over, or scratch it?
If, if the fall is greater than 30 inches?
I measured it last week. We had 28, 29. The last stupid hurricane brought some more sand back. I anticipate that.
And if the tide is going to go back out.
Exactly.
It says 7,500 here.
No, 14.
Okay, 14, it says 14,000.
14,000.
That's not, that's not going to buy that handrail, is it?
Yeah, I got a price.
Oh, you did?
We were successful, it's around 6,000 for the materials, and Public Works is going to install them.
Oh, okay, great, yeah, that's better. I mean, that is if we need to do it. I don't think it's a priority personally, but.
That's why it's here for you to consider.
Do we want to carry it over to 14, to, to the next fiscal year? And get it out here?
This budget or the next budget?
The next budget.
I think we're going to need it in this budget. I think you could get a couple high tides in there, you're going to wash that sand back out.
It'll be a liability.
Okay.
I think it'll be a liability.
Then we'll keep it in, okay.
The coffer dam, seawall, I listed the seawalls. You have to be aware of this, all the seawall, the footings are showing.
Yeah, so if the, if the, okay, so, so we put a fence on top, and the whole seawall falls over. I don't get it. We're putting the cart before the horse. The whole, the whole, the seawall, whole seawall is, is concaving from underneath, and we're going to put a, a little fence on top that's going to keep people from falling over, and we're going to lose the whole beach is what's happening right now. So I think we need to put our attention and that money in this, in a, a fix for the entire lower section of the beach, and the seawall, which the seawall is going to become the Serpentine Wall, and C.C. Gallagher's is going to be the seawall, you know, if we let this happen.
Yeah, that was my object, is to put it all here on paper for you guys to go and shake it out, because it's, it's tough. It's tough to make these decisions, especially with no money.
It's not, that's an easy decision for me.
Okay, but it's 7.5 million, and how do we fund something like that? Yet?
I don't see how it's going to cost 7.5 million. I think we put the sand back, that's all we got to do. Petition our needs to the public util, to the Coastal Commission, tell them what our urgency is, and?
Joe, I also have that listed.
Okay.
On the CIP plan, we have a replenishment beaches bathymetric study. I don't have any monies there, but what I'm envisioning is dredging some sand back.
And it's going to make our, our beach a relative jail. It's like, okay, let's, why don't we just put a fence there? You know, I, I just, I think it's so, so ugly, having a fence along our beach that keeps people from going into the water. We need to fix the problem, bring the level of the sand back up like it used to be 20 years ago, and?
Yeah, that's what 11B is talking about, so I'll, I'll need you guys to consider 11B, which would, which might eliminate the problem of the coffer dams, the $7 million thing.
I think this is where we, well, profession, from professional speaking, I need your input on that, because I have no idea.
Understood. We'll be happy to meet with you, or we can call some engineers in.
No.
We'll go back to the second page.
Oh, the storm drain gate? That is going to be funded privately?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, continue.
It's okay. Again, a lot of the things that aren't in the fiscal year 14, 15 column are for your judgment, they're listed there for you to take a look at. And if you want it in there, we can certainly put it in there. Or if you want any of the dollar values out and put it later, it's entirely up to you. So if you'd like to keep going through the things, we can, or in the interest of time, it's entirely up to you.
When's our next budget study session scheduled, Denise? Do you remember?
Next Monday at 3:00 P.M.
Okay, so we're, our plan is to pick up and go through it again and march through. We're hoping that you would maybe have some time to live with this for a little bit, maybe identify some things we didn't think of, some other concerns, that's, that's the goal. Gina, did you want to have a real quick statement before we need to adjourn?
I, I did pass out one other document for you, a small one. It's just a little bit of a high level to enhance what you have here as well, and it gives you some of our assumptions in the base budget. I anticipate in the next meeting, I will hand out the detail again, after some adjustments that we're going to be making. That was a detail that you were requesting, Annie, and we'll go through that page by page. This is high level, like I said, and I've got numbers on the left and the right to follow since it's small print. And what we have here on the top is the labor breakout, and I'll briefly go through this, and, but I, I know you will have more questions. We're starting with the adopted, last year's adopted budget, and from labor and benefits, as well as capital contracts and debt, moving to what we have in fiscal year 14 to show you the difference between last year and this year. So briefly, going across, you have adopted for labor, and then in that base budget, we had a 1% for COLA, for anticipated COLA. We, we did not implement that at that time, but it was in the base. Then the reductions, that, this is changes in retirement, salaries, things that have been reduced during that period of time, that total 762,000, for a subtotal of 6.7 million. Then we added a recreation assistant position, as well as a, the six months of interim CFO and six months of a full-time finance director, for a total of 6.9 million. And then we had some base changes. These are adjustments to assumptions, health benefits, workers' comp, upgrades, and longevity pay, for a total of $7 million. And then column F, we're adding a raise there, and this is one of the assumptions, a 4% raise for AMAA with a deduct of 1.9% that they'll be contributing to retirement, and 2% for all others. And that, the 4% will also go to part timers, I should say, as well. And that totals 137,000 for one year, for a total of 7.1 million. Column G is a proposed stipend for mobile device usage, whether it's your smartphone, data planned, for those individuals that do use their cellphone for work. And we also have an option to have the city purchase a phone. That totals 27,000, I understa, I can see the total didn't drop down, I got a raise there, I'll put that back in, for a total of 7.1 million. As we move down, you'll see personnel services, and this is, tip my hat to Cindy, I'm detailing out, it's an estimate on the left side for 13, 14. out, it's an estimate on the left side for 13, 14. Some of the expenditures weren't budgeted for, but they were, we had budgeted for other things that we didn't spend, so. That total for personnel services, which includes Dennis as a CIP project manager, myself as project manager, building inspector, IT advisor and of course a HR manager, which we didn't have at that time, at zero for 13, 14. If you move across to 14, 15, we have the budgeted amounts for those, for a total of $548,000. As we move down, base services, these are services that you really can't do without. It's just a matter of getting another vendor if you could. And that shows the total amount for 13, 14 and the change for 14, 15. And again, I'll go through that detail. I have notes below in terms of the reasons for the change. We are revisiting Enviren Strategy and the assumptions that are there and revisiting the contract from an administrative perspective, not from a, from an adoption perspective, how we're interpreting it. And you'll also see Chamber of Commerce is there, it's, we have a subsidy in place, so they aren't going anywhere. We have to make that payment with our TOT proceeds. City attorney has gone down significantly as a result of no longer having the bike race, the motorcycle race in and toxic Falls Canyon legal expenses associated with our city attorney. We will have others associated with specialized legal services, but not associated with the city BB&amp;K, so.
And that'll show up somewhere else.
Correct, and we're anticipating that to be reimbursed. We've received some checks already, at least a chunk of it. And then we've got some debt, not much, I have to say, in the city, on the city side. Successor has its debt, but that isn't a city debt. And so it's minimal, we just purchased a actor truck and that's $65,000 for five years. It's a, it's a lease to own. And then I've got a net number here, this 9.8 on the adopted side for 13, 14 and 11 million. On the 14, 15 side, that's a net of a lot of ins and outs that are going on. And so I wanted to leave you with an overview of the assumptions that's in the base budget. And I have, of course, a lot of more white paper here and big picture that can get, drill you into the detail. And Cindy, I've been working with Cindy on a spreadsheet, I have that here available as well, if you'd like it, on contract detail to help you look at things. So that's it for me. I think fundamentally, I would be remiss to not mention the big picture at the bottom, $1.8 million. Even though that's taking from some money like the Mole, 500,000, Fuel Dock, anticipated expenditures, we do have a core issue here. We are spending at a rate into our savings account that we can't sustain. So the next step, when both Chris and I are on the same page, is to do a financial forecast to show when we cross and...
Thank you.
What portion is operations, what portion's at one time? And we, there's more structural changes we have to make. Chris has been doing an incredible job with the buckets, seeing what money's been put in the bucket and where it really should be. In some cases, it's just moving it from one line to another, others, it's completely different buckets on the expenditure and revenue side. And we want to make it easy for you to understand, so, and transparent, so that will take a little bit of time in that. Comparison, I'm showing you apples to apples, so we're keeping the structure the way it's been, slowly making changes. We don't want to do apples to oranges, so it's confusing, that's, but we will be making significant changes in the structure of the buckets and how things flow in order to bring us up to date. So, anyway, I hope that was a sum up.
Yeah, that's good. So we'll meet again on Monday at 3:00. Please let us know in the interim if you want to talk about any of this stuff.
And we can, can we pick up, or I'm happy to meet with Dennis separately, too, but I definitely want to make sure we pick up with page two of the capital improvement projects list.
You're right.
And go through those.